Welcome, everyone, to the June 28 City Council meeting. Just to start, I want to let all of you know that the work session on sick leave, we got through it in time to pass a motion, and so it passed in favor of the paid sick leave, five to three, just to let you know. All right, then. And the next thing I want to let you know is I want to recognize the newly appointed Sustainability Commission members. Summer Cox has been appointed by Councilor Polling to the Ward four position. Justin Overdevest has been appointed by Councilor Prior to the Ward eight position. So congratulations to Summer and Jason, and thanks to both of you for your willingness to participate in this important program. Now, we'll move into the public forum, part of our meeting. Public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any related city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. We were going to limit it to 30 minutes when we thought we were going to need a good portion of the time to the sick leave discussion, but since we don't need that, I will still encourage people to not talk any more than you need to. So we have 21 people signed up. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. Bob Cassidy is up first, followed by Joe LaFleur.
Bob Cassidy, 1401 East 27th, Allen, Alinkas Ward. I can imagine that the citizens in Seattle are very proud of the fact that many people will now be getting a better wage at $15 an hour and will not be needing to draw on food stamps. It should make one proud to be a citizen of Seattle. There's no reason why we in Eugene cannot do the same. Back in 1992, I was a deli owner and paid above minimum wage plus other benefits, insurance, and meals. And when I campaigned for a state higher minimum wage, and it became public, my business went way up. People wanted to do business in places that treated to help well. I had problems of paying even better, and I did want to, because the competition was paying slave labor wages. That was $4.25 an hour at that time. The competition was unfair because they were paying what I thought was immoral wages. The same problem is happening with paid sick leave you are discussing right now, that competition. I see the low wage problem in a new light now. These new low wages, the low wage earners do not pay income taxes for the most part. They pay FICA taxes, and all that money goes to pay for Social Security and Medicare, which I benefit from. The higher the wages, the more we fund Social Security. Minimum wage is a senior issue. Sure, we borrow ideas from other cities. That's good. We can't be number one on this issue. Already, other cities are doing considering higher wage law. We should be joining the crowd and taking care of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe LaFleur is next, followed by Families for Safe Meters.
My name is Joe LaFleur. I'm a registered geologist in the state of Oregon. I've been registered since registration began. I'm not a citizen of Eugene. I live on the Lower McKenzie, but I was invited here by some of your constituency that is concerned about microwaves and the possible placement of microwave towers in their community. And they asked me to come testify on what I have observed. Being a geologist, I get paid for being observant in the field, but growing up on Lower Camp Creek, I've always been observant. I've been floating that McKenzie River since I was eight years old. I lived there near Ballinger Boat Landing on Oak Point Road, and every single spring, the return of the swallows was like Capistrano. In the early summer of 2010, all the swallows returned, and they began fighting over the nesting places, and there were hundreds of them, as usual. And then they all, one day, suddenly left. And that departure was coincident with the microwave towers across the river changing from three to four G. And I began paying attention to other locations, and I have found that Walterville Pond, Lieberg Lake, DeShute's, or Lookout Point Reservoir, the Umpqua, every place that I've gone that has always had flocks of birds, the side sloughs on the McKenzie, all of these places have been vacated, and people are just totally unaware of this. I went down to the coast, and I went to that huge, beautiful beach that's south of Winchester Bay there, and I could see in each direction for at least a mile, there wasn't a person, nor was there a single bird. I went up to Hasida Beach. There was one seagull on Hasida Beach. I went on further up to Hasida Head, and there, in that little confined place in between the rocks at Hasida Head, there was a normal bird population, but there was absolutely no cellphone reception. This did not only just affect the birds, it affected the bees, bats, and bugs. We didn't have any bees for several years. We didn't have any fruit on our trees. The bugs were so absent that we didn't have to close our screen doors, and weren't any bugs beating themselves to death on the porch lights. And I began researching this, and I found that other places in the world have observed this, and that there was a woman who lived up at Lieberg Lake who testified, and she wrote this letter to Peter Defazio, saying that when EWEB went and put a microwave tower up there, it just evacuated the lake of birds and began killing other animals and plants, and it made her so sick, she says, that she had to leave home. And in researching this thing on the Internet, I have found very compelling evidence that microwaves are doing much more to
Thank you.
...the environment that we know. I'm going to pass this around to you. Here is the website of the best scientific source I have ever seen.
Over here.
And it is the Electromagnetic Radiation
Okay, thank you.
Foundation of South Africa.
Families for Safe Meters is up next, followed by Artie Galaud.
Families for Safe Meters, legal notice and demand.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Excuse me?
Introduce yourself. You.
Introduce yourself?
Abraham LeCuanic.
Okay.
You are hereby notified that EWEB's decision to replace water and electric analog meters with electromagnetic radio frequency microwave radiating, receiving and broadcasting wireless digital meters, henceforth smart meters, contravenes EWEB's bylaws and the environmental commitment. In addition, this action is contrary to the ethical and moral imperative not to take any action that even potentially could cause harm to people, animals, and the environment. The lack of credible certification and independent testing of smart meters, and therefore the uncertainty of their safety, makes EWEB's program akin to indiscriminate mass public experimentation forbidden by the Nuremberg Code, Declaration of Helsinki, and the Belmont Report. Significant and reliable evidence clearly illustrates the many dangers of smart meters. Thus, installing these digital meters would almost certainly cause harm to the environment in addition to threatening health, safety, security, and privacy, thus violating the constitutionally protected, unalienable rights of all the people living and working in EWEB's service district. Due to the omnipresence of smart meter-generated electromagnetic microwave fields in the environment, no living being would be immune from its harmful effects. Concurrently, there cannot be a genuine choice for anyone. Thus, the opt-in policy EWEB has adopted on 10-113 does not absolve EWEB of its duty to cause no harm and to protect the natural environment, including the people, animals, and plants in EWEB's service area. By contrast, this proposed action threatens to breach EWEB's oath of office, together with its fiduciary responsibility as a trustee. These are serious offenses. Furthermore, the consequences of EWEB's decision could make EWEB and you personally liable for civil and criminal charges in your private capacity in addition to your public capacity, thus rendering EWEB's decisions and corresponding actions void under the doctrine of ultravirus. EWEB has not provided adequate explanation as to why it would be worth the enormous cost and effort to install and maintain this digital smart meter infrastructure, considering all of the real dangers, risks, and uncertainties, as well as all the potential future health-related litigations. EWEB has not provided adequate explanation as to why it is willing to recklessly endanger our community by not agreeing to implement the guidelines of the precautionary
Thank you. Next up is Artie Galaud, followed by Cindy Allen.
My name is Artie Galaud, 2140 West 27th in Eugene, and I'm here for safe meters. I'd like to continue with what EWEB, what Abraham was talking about. EWEB has refused to acknowledge the validity of the preponderance of credible evidence proving the many of the real potential risks inherent in these digital smart meter technology. EWEB has chosen to ignore the negative feedback litigation and activism around the world attributed to the installation of these meters by other utilities. EWEB has failed to comprehend that even the safest digital meters could be made unsafe in the future by a simple change of firmware. EWEB has unwisely decided to put its resources into smart meter infrastructure rather than the more sustainable alternative energy infrastructure where it would do the most good for the community. The advantages of smart meters are negligible and controversial; the disadvantages are numerous and well documented. Now that you have been given the notice of EWEB's plans to install these potentially harmful smart meters, also be advised that if and when you are sued for damages, your bond insurance company may not provide sufficient coverage because of your prior knowledge of the potential harm. This could make you negligent in their eyes and void any agreement you or the city of Eugene may have with them. Because of your prior knowledge, you may be held criminally liable in the Oregon Revised Statutes for official misconduct, prison, possibly a fine. You are hereby given legal notice. You are required to act in the best interest of EWEB, rate owners, and people living in and using the services of EWEB's district, or suffer the consequences of your actions. You do not have plausible deniability in this matter. Families for Safe Meters respectfully demands and requires that you fulfill your obligations as trustees to the owners of EWEB, the environment, and all the people living in and using the services in EWEB's district by officially requiring EWEB to implement the precautionary principle and cease and desist any contract signing or implementation of any plans to purchase or install any type of digital smart meters due to the potential harm it may cause to the community now and in the future by the potential implementation of digital meter software, firmware upgrades, alterations, or replacements. If you choose not to comply with this demand, appropriate actions will be taken notifying the proper authorities and possible legal action. This legal notice and demand has been given to each member of the City Council and the mayor, along with a CD documenting the evidence of all the problems with digital smart meters. This notice and demand can be read on the website, Families for Safe Meters, and someone is going to pass out a documentary that was done to each one of you called Take Back Your Power. I would suggest that you please listen to it and see what our friends at EWEB are up to. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Allen's up next, followed by David Strahan.
Cindy Allen, Representative Pete Sorensen has told others that the open forum in front of the City Council is the best place to address this issue. Last January, I received notice about a neighborhood meeting regarding a proposed eight-story cell tower at the church on 4060 West Amazon in Eugene. The current owner is Reverend Aaron Taylor of Crossfire Ministries of Springfield. This is a small corner lot in the middle of a residential area, near a school, a daycare center, and a senior facility. Unbelievably, to fit this huge eight-story cell tower into the site, Reverend Taylor proposed building the tower's infrastructure right into the existing church building. He challenged our intelligence by saying that he hoped the cell tower would bring in a few hundred dollars a month. The amount that an LLC buyout company is willing to pay for the contract must be more than enough to cover the devaluation of this property. I can think of no other church ever wanting to buy a building with the liabilities of an eight-story cell tower built into its structure. But a cell tower lease is similar to an oil lease. Reverend Taylor could default on the property payments and still retain the tower lease. But what about the health, safety, and property devaluations of neighbors left with an eight-story cell tower? The Eugene Planning Board found it unprecedented, ten and a half pages of problems with Taylor's proposal. In addition to safety concerns, other issues included negative aesthetics, noise, and odor coming from the tower. There are families living within 100 feet of the site, but Reverend Taylor seems to be a very determined man, and I'm concerned for my neighborhood and others who may be facing similar situations in the future. It appears the City Council may not have updated its cell tower ordinances since 1996. The county requires that a cell tower be at least 1,200 feet from houses. I would like to request that the City Council review the cell tower ordinances and also adopt the 1,200-foot distance. We need as few of these towers as possible with the lowest of emitting radiation located in the safest of places. These are basic standards that much of the world already follows. There's a DVD for each council member of the award-winning documentary, Take Back Your Power, that clearly discusses the many issues that we are facing with smart meters in these cell towers. Thank you very much.
David Strahan is next, followed by Mark Rubinowitz.
I'm David Strahan. I live just outside city limits, and in light of a busy schedule, I'll be brief. I wanted to thank you for your acknowledgement of the success of OVE and the rest stop programs. As a representative of Nightingale Health Sanctuary, we also support these programs and their extension of the rest stop program. As many of council have heard, we have signed a lease on private property at 25 North Polk, and tonight, we are here to request that our leased property be designated as a rest stop, and further request that council authorize our city manager to enter an agreement with Nightingale Health Sanctuary to operate the site as a rest stop. We met with city manager and staff today, and they support our vision. We look forward to working with the city staff to accomplish the goals of our mission and help broaden the portfolio of affordable housing. Thank you.
Mark Rubinowitz is next, followed by Joseph Newton.
Mark Rubinowitz. And I read a couple days ago the proposal that the city is sponsoring a workshop with Resource Innovation Group to talk about the psychology of transition, and this is very good. But there's a few things to add to the list. Climate change is not the only crisis for civilization, and merely acknowledging anthropogenic climate change is a tiny part of what we face. That was something I thought we dealt with a quarter century ago, but apparently not. Denial of climate change is a problem, but so is greenwashing and offering false solutions and baby steps. Carbon credits, carbon-neutral highway widening, helicopter herbicides, corporate clear cuts that caused desertification and drying out of the landscape of the West, denial that we're at peak oil, and peak coal, and peak natural gas, and peak fracking, denial about nuclear warfare plans that still go on, denial that Wayne Morse was told by John Kennedy he was pulling out of Vietnam just before he was removed from office. One common psychological dysfunction that you often hear when raising these things is, "Well, we agree, but we don't want to hear about that." We live in a not-see culture. We are in a round, finite planet. Growth has reached its peak, and magical thinking cannot change physics. I do want to commend a couple members of the Eugene Sustainability Commission, who are considering a letter to all of you that states, "We urge the council to reject all of the proposed designs for Beltline highway improvements, and direct staff to produce a plan that is more consistent with adopted city goals and policies while addressing the safety concerns at this intersection." There's $5 million that we're going to give to the contractors to study something way oversized, an 11-lane Beltline. There's $6.2 million that the Land Council of Governments has redirected from the Beltline High Five interchange that might be enough to do ramp work at Delta Highway and Beltline. But the idea we're going to have 30% more traffic as the oil runs out is ridiculous to anyone's intelligence. The oil wells are half-empty, so we can't keep doing what we're doing. But the oil wells are also half-full. We have lots of resources for transition, but not if we waste it on 11-lane Beltline, 11-lane Beltline, and skyscrapers and sports arenas. We need to prepare for the post-carbon future that obeys the laws of thermodynamics, because entropy is not a good idea, it's the law.
Joseph Newton is next, followed by Laura Illeg.
Yeah, and I want to speak in favor of the Nightingale proposal for
Introduce yourself, Joseph.
Oh, Joseph Newton. I've lived in Ward seven for, oh, good part of the last 20 years. For over 13 of the last 20 years, I've lived within 200 blocks, or within 200 yards of the lot that Nightingale just leased, and walked through the adjoining, along the adjoining bike trail when I'd work at the Whittaker Dinner, and go back and forth. And I'd noticed, you know, the bike trail there has been a de facto homeless camp all along, but it's not what we want here. That's obviously the sort of camping that people see as problematic. That lot, meanwhile, you know, it hasn't really done anything but sit there as sort of an attractive nuisance for many, many years. Right now, there are people who are pretty dedicated to doing it right, and very specifically to doing it right, to starting in a very ordered manner and developing a camp, and doing it right, right there. This is a good place. It's a good neighborhood. I do agree with my neighbors who say that, well, way too much of this is ending up in the Whittaker, not near enough in other neighborhoods. And I totally agree. There should be more in other neighborhoods. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be adding much more into Whittaker, also because reality is that once this camp goes in, once all our other rest stops go in, once anything envisioned go in, we're still only scratching the surface. But at least we're doing something, and we're making a demonstration of positive intent on this problem that's probably way too big for us to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Illeg is next, followed by Dean Hale.
Laura Illeg, 741 East 20th Avenue in Ward three. So Mayor Piercy and city councilors, I want to applaud you for your hard work and leadership on the issue of earned paid sick leave for Eugene. Tonight, you voted yes on paid sick leave, and you did the right thing for our city. You did the right thing for hard-working people who will no longer have to choose between their health and their paycheck. You did the right thing for working women, allowing the female half of our talent pool to fully participate in our economy by being able to work and care for themselves or their sick loved ones. You did the right thing for our children, who will no longer need to go to daycare sick or miss school days to stay home and care for a younger sibling. You did the right thing for the public health of our community, because sick people, preparing food, or providing health care, or spreading germs in any workplace, benefits no one. You did the right thing for business, contrary to what I know many have said. No matter what initial hiccups or tracking challenges we will have, and we will have them, healthy, productive workers who are neither ill nor crazy with worry about a sick child is good for business. And you did the right thing as leaders. Eugene had the chance today. You enabled Eugene to be a leader in family-friendly public policy, as well as improved public health and economic justice. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Dean Hale is next, followed by Wayne Martin.
Good evening. My name is Dean Hale. I come from the Harlow neighborhood, Tandy Turn off Cobrick Road. In previous months, I've testified about some unanticipated consequences for legacy flag lot owners, and that would have prohibited owners of flag lots from building the so-called mother-in-law cottage. I testified. I spoke with various people. I connected with Paul Conti. Paul Conti spoke with many of the council people, spoke with staff, spoke with the neighborhoods. We came up with an alternative proposal. It's in the packet for item number six tonight. It has my full support. But really, what I'd like to say to unite is, thank you. You listened. We had a good dialogue, good input, and it's just a good demonstration that democracy is working as it should work. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Wayne Martin is next, followed by Chris Dickinson.
I'm Wayne Martin. Live in Ward one. I'd like to speak on behalf of what Mr. Strahan said just a few moments ago, that is, that a motion is being prepared to be presented to the council. I speak on behalf of the founding steering committee of the Nightingale Health Sanctuary. The steering committee is composed of seven members, including Nathan Showers, who is a member of the unhoused community, and we gain a lot of insights about many people who are unhoused simply from his involvement. I'm really asking for your immediate support and action on the motion that will be offered to you at your next work session. It's a daunting task that the seven of us, we've now expanded to nine, have undertaken. We're pursuing 501(c)(3) status. We are entering into a collaborative and collegial relationship with Opportunity Village of Eugene and many other agencies, such as Lila. These are helpful alliances, but the work is formidable as we continue to try to get off the ground. We've begun taking our message to neighborhood councils, including the Whittaker Council at its July meeting. As I said, it's a daunting task. We've taken a risk by renting a 1.1-acre site on Railroad Ave. We've been seeking to find a local insurance broker so that we can find a carrier to work with us the way Opportunity Village found an agency to work with it. We haven't yet found such, so perhaps you could be of help, any of you, if you know the insurance community, by just passing on a name or two, because the ones we've been looking at are slow to act. So finally, again, we have a daunting task. We're just a group of people who have many other things going in our lives. The greatest help you can give us is to join us in our efforts to care for the chronic health needs of the unhoused. In short, begin your help by passing the motion that will be given to you to pass, and which Mr. Strahan has already alluded to. Please do help us in this way. Thank you.
Chris Dickinson is next, followed by Brian Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Chris Dickinson. I live at 4307 Catalina Street in Ward six. I came here this evening to ask that you pass the sick leave ordinance, but now I'm here thanking you for passing it. It's, it means a lot to me, very personally. I'm a full-time caregiver for two elderly disabled women, my mom and my aunt. They rely on me daily to help them with their day-to-day activities. I have to stay healthy and strong to help them. My mom has chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, which makes it very hard for her to breathe, as she is living on oxygen. She can't be exposed to colds and viruses. As her caregiver, I need to feel as safe as possible when I go out into public. I need to know that the businesses that I patronize will not have sick people working for them. These germs that give most people a simple cold could actually be fatal to my dear family members, and I know that I am not the only one in this position. Workers should feel safe and comfortable and calm and sick. With wages as low as they are, most people cannot afford to miss even one day of work without pay. As a consumer, I will not return to a business if I see sick employees. So I am here tonight to thank you for passing that ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Brian Johnson is next, followed by Eric Richardson. Brian Johnson is next, followed by Eric Richardson.
Good evening, I'm Brian Johnson, I live in Ward 2. I'm here tonight as the president of the Oregon Public Health Association, and really just wanted to say thank you to the council for your leadership for tonight in passing earned sick leave and making that possible in our community, for putting in place an ordinance which so clearly impacts and promotes health and protects health within our community. So, thank you.
Eric Richardson is next, followed by Jerry Smith.
Mayor, city councilman. My name's Eric Richardson, I'm from Ward 7. Tonight I'm here just representing members and constituents of the NAACP in Eugene. I recently attended the 105th Annual Convention of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, where I learned about and was tasked to talk about the national movement in support of the health and welfare of low-income workers. So I just want to commend you for the work you've done tonight in passing the leave ordinance. And I'm also here to ask you to continue to lead the nation from the roots, that's the city level up, by voting in solidarity with our local workers and people in need, and families across the nation, to, and a lot of times, look west for our vision and courage and guidance as we move the nation forward. So I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Smith is next, followed by Chris Wig.
I'm Jerry Smith, I'm a, live on Saxon Way, and very much appreciate my counselor Betty I'm speaking mainly about sleeping, and about climate recovery. As a retired social worker, I volunteer with homeless people every week. And I just wanted to tell you today that I saw three separate individuals among the many homeless and poor people that I see, who were absolutely worn out, they could hardly stand. We have plenty of wonderful places like The Mission, sponsors First Place, Station 7, Hosea, Opportunity Village, the rest stops. But way too few. People who are newly into homelessness have a really hard time finding a place to sleep. And the people that I see having trouble to sleep are sick and disabled, and it's a very sad situation. I have no place to refer them, I wish there was more. I can tell them about what exists, but nothing beyond that if they're overfilled, and they generally are. In terms of climate recovery, so much expensive damage is happening in the United States and Lane County. Tonight on TV, I was looking at the picture of Oregon burning, particularly on the east side, it just covered the whole map. The seasons are much longer, much hotter, much more dangerous, and what we do about controlling carbon and maintaining our forests to sequester carbon is critical. So I guess that's pretty much what I have to say. People need beds, we need to take care of the climate, and neither of these issues are without controversy, and very powerful corporations and individuals who remain backwards and stupid about the issues pretending that they don't have them.
Next up is Chris Wig, followed by Kevin Billman.
Hello, my name is Chris Wig, and I serve as the vice chairman of the Democratic Party of Lane County. I live in Ward 1 of Eugene, in the Jefferson West Side neighborhood. I came here tonight representing the 43,293 Democrats who live in Eugene, to ask you to vote yes for paid sick days in our city, but you already did that. So thank you, thank you very much. I don't get enough chances to come up here and say thank you for all of the great work that you do. On our behalf, the party, our position on this issue's been clear. It's been clear since last November when our central committee passed a resolution unanimously in support of the ordinance, and then was reaffirmed in January when we adopted our platform, which states, and I quote, "Adopt a consistent minimum standards for earned sick time for the city of Eugene and statewide." I'd like to offer my personal thanks to Councilor Pryor. He attended that January meeting, and his moral and economic arguments were instrumental in the party deciding to take such a strong stance on the issue. And, you know, he really clarified things for me personally on that. Last week at the public hearing, you heard testimony from people whose everyday lives will be positively impacted by the ordinance. And I felt touched by those stories, and I think, I think we all did. So, to make a long story short, I just wanted to come up here tonight to say thank you very much for doing the right thing and standing up for the working families and middle-class families in our city.
Kevin Billman is next, followed by Arianna Espinoza.
Mayor Piercy, city councilors, my name's Kevin Billman, and I'm here on behalf of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, over 400 members in Eugene, over 1,100 in Lane County, over 20,000 in the state of Oregon. Thank you for doing the right thing for working people today. Thank you for doing the right thing for the public, thank you for passing sick days.
Arianna Espinoza is next, followed by Carla McNelly.
Hi, my name is Arianna Espinoza, I live in Ward 7. And on behalf of 30 members of Amigos en Juventud Vaseta, I'm here to thank you for passing the paid sick days, and for listening to all the needs that the workers in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla McNelly is next, followed by Connor Teal.
Hi, my name is Carla McNelly, and I'm from Eugene, I live at Northwest Expressway in Cornwall. And I'm the president of the SEIU Local 085, University of Oregon. And on behalf of the 55,000 members of our statewide local 503, I'm here with several of my coworkers to thank you for listening to the needs of all workers in our community, and for voting yes on the paid sick days for Eugene. Thank you.
Connor Teal is next, followed by Bob Bustle.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Connor Teal, I am in Mrs. Delanca's ward, been there, owned my home for about five years now there. And yeah, I've lived in this community for half my life, and I really, really want to thank you for passing this paid sick leave ordinance. It's something that's going to benefit everyone here, we've seen it in all around the world, 145 countries have this in place already. So this should have been done before I was born, but I'm glad this is finally done, and we can move on to more important things, like the unhoused, for instance. That's a critical issue that I am personally involved with and like to get more involved with, so I hope we really address that before winter starts. So, thank you again, this is really important for everyone, appreciate it.
Your last up is Bob Bustle.
Good evening, Mayor Piercy and councilors, my name is Bob Bustle, I live in Ward 4. Over the last 40 years, I've been involved in many contests about political legislation, and I've come to observe that these contests often involve a familiar dynamic, which I actually noticed recently in the fight over paid sick leave, and that's the dynamic of hope versus fear. I want to applaud you for choosing hope over fear, and voting to make a real and lasting difference in the lives of workers, their families, and our community, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
I'm going to close a public forum, I'm going to thank you all for being here, I'm going to turn to council and see if anybody has any, council chair.
Yes, thank you, those who came and thanked us for the work we did at our 5:30 work session, it's really nice to hear thank yous from the podium, we don't get those often enough. So, glad to help you have a reason to be thankful for our work tonight. I did want to respond to the request from the folks involved in the Nightingale Collective, and I want to let my fellow councilors and the community know that the leaders of that effort had been in touch with me about what they were hoping for the 25 North Polk site, and also the canvassing that they've been doing out there in the neighborhood, and spoke to me about this request prior to tonight's meeting, and I've also spoke with the city manager. So, this isn't a total surprise for me as the council for that ward. What I'd like to ask, is to ask John to draft a motion for our Wednesday council session for the council to consider whether or not to designate the 25 North Polk site as a rest stop, with caveats around outreach from the city to the neighborhood, and that the rest stop would be temporary, a temporary designation that would be ended when the site was developed for the proposed micro housing that is envisioned there. And I do want to say, you know, I've spoken at this, from this podium, that I didn't want to see any more rest stops in Ward 7. I do think there is a dispersal policy in the city that is there for a reason, but we have been very challenged to find other sites for rest stops. So I'm willing to consider this and to ask my fellow councilors to consider it. It is on private land, it is not a city-owned lot, it's not in the Trainsong neighborhood, which is where our current rest stops are sited. John has told me he would like the city to conduct outreach in the neighborhood before he approves it as a rest stop. And the folks involved in this effort have pledged to start small and move slowly, and they are also folks who have a very successful track record of responsibly implementing and maintaining Opportunity Village. They've followed through on all the commitments they've made in relation to that project. So in my mind, they have a very high level of credibility, and a strong commitment to make this project as successful as Opportunity Village. So I'm inclined to trust them, and to do due diligence in addressing the neighborhood concerns. And I will be honest, I've had a couple of folks who were canvassed who have contacted me with concerns about this proposal, so we really need to take those voices into account as we think about this. But I do want to ask my fellow councilors to consider this motion at our Wednesday work session.
Any other council remarks?
Thank you, Mayor, I've said since the beginning that I believe a wiser way for the city to address that issue is for us to look at options of bringing in more community members with more pieces of private property, and for us to act as more of an information source and exchange. And to the degree that I haven't learned yet any potential shortcomings in this particular proposal that would be a burden to the city, I'd say at first blush, I'm inclined to want to support it because it moves in the direction I've always thought was the wiser way to go.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Taylor?
About the cell towers, because of federal law, we're very limited in what we can do to control cell towers. We can't, we're prohibited from stopping them because of health risks, but I have asked for a work session, and it's been, we will be having a work session to see if we can do something more than we're currently doing, such as the setback that was mentioned. Thank you.
So I wanted to tell you that one person sort of slipped out of the pile, so I will open this forum up again and ask if Jim Stauffer wants to speak.
Last but not least, I was beginning to feel a little left out. Jim Stauffer, Ward 7, and I want to speak to the continuation of the rest stops. I live right on the corner of Garfield and Roosevelt, and that puts me right across the street from the Garfield rest stop, and right across the tracks from the Northwest Expressway rest stop, and about half a block down from Opportunity Village. And since all these things have come into being, I've not noticed any problems out of the ordinary in the neighborhood. I haven't seen any increase in emergency responders blaring through and carting people away, I haven't seen any increase in litter or vandalism or things disappearing. I read the police report that's in the agenda, where they put in the crime statistics comparisons, and glad to say those statistics seem to bear out the observations that I've been talking about. Basically, these folks have been good neighbors, and I want to congratulate the community support shelters folks for what looks like a really successful program. They've been getting people off the streets, and getting them into training, and managing the rest stops really well. So I just want to encourage the council to vote in favor of the continuation. Thank you.
That was last but not least. I'm going to close a public forum, and we're going to move on. Thank you, thank you, everyone who came tonight, thank you very much. So we're going to go on to the consent calendar, council president?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second. Moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor indicate aid in favor, none in opposition, passes, thank you. We go on to action, item number 3, action and ordinance concerning the definition of motorized transportation. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight you are to consider an ordinance that would change Eugene city code regarding skateboard and bicycle laws. The first proposal would allow electric-assisted bikes on off-street paths with the electric device engaged, except within the East Alton Baker Park plan boundary. The second proposal would modify the current downtown Eugene skateboard/bicycle no sidewalk riding zone boundaries into one combined area.
So, council president?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5123, an ordinance that allows electric-assisted bicycles to be operated on off-street paths with electric motor engaged, except when the east, within the East Alton Baker Park plan boundary, and modifies the current downtown Eugene skateboard/bicycle no sidewalk riding zone boundaries into one combined area.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion, council polling?
Thank you. During the public hearing Monday night, somebody brought up the issue of perhaps allowing segways to be included in this. I was kind of interested in that idea, however, because of the newness of it, I didn't have any information, so I received some information from Kurt Corey, our public works director, about segways and the challenges they present on the bicycle, off-road bicycle paths, the size, the footprint that they take up, a bunch of other things. So, at this time, I'm not interested in including them into this ordinance, I had voiced maybe a concern that I might make an amendment to include them. But I think until such time technology increases in the segue, I'm going to hold off at this point and support the ordinance as written.
Okay, council Delanca?
Well, I actually am interested in exploring adding, what do they call them, upright self-balancing scooters or segways to the ordinance. During comment period, maybe Kurt knows this, during the comment period during the stakeholder and public meetings back in November, did anybody address segways? Lee Shoemaker can help with that.
That didn't come up at our public meeting, just recently, did we hear from people?
Okay, so it wasn't really discussed?
Right.
Right, so, I acknowledge, I got the same email from Kurt Corey, I acknowledge they're larger, but I don't see them as unsafe, and I don't think they're that different than electric-assisted bikes. I've never heard, I've only heard of one person getting hurt on a Segway. Lots of cities have them, they do tours on them, people who are, are very safe, and seems like an alternative mode of transportation, along with electric-assisted bikes and skateboards that we should be promoting. Apparently ORS permits them on sidewalks and bike paths and lanes, and with the same rights and responsibilities as bicyclists. And a friend of mine and colleague, former secretary of state Bill Bradbury, who unfortunately is afflicted with MS, actually has a Segway to help him get around, and I, I think he should be allowed to have that on our off-street paths. I guess I posed the question, why not? And, make a motion. And so, do you have a response to that before I make a motion?
Well, I think it had to do with the weight of the segways, they're about three times as much as a regular bicycle, and our paths are crowded at times, and so it's the con- as much as a regular bicycle, and our paths are crowded at times, and so it's the conflict areas with the pedestrians would be the biggest concern.
Mm-hmm, and they deal with those in cities that allow them on sidewalks. San Diego, I know, is just there vacationing, and they have them all over the place. Doesn't seem to be that much of a problem on conflicts.
Typically, they're allowed.
Yeah, okay. So I'll move to add upright self-balancing scooters or segways to the ordinance where electric-assisted bikes were added to be allowed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. For the discussion?
If, I'm treating this as sort of an intended motion. If this passes, then what I'll need you to do is postpone action on this until I can actually bring back the ordinance language, which I can do on Wednesday, but you can't pass the ordinance with a concept, so I'll need to bring back specific language for the ordinance.
Right, right. Yeah, that's what I was expecting.
Okay, councillor Clark?
An enforcement question on bike paths. Do we have speed limits for the speed at which bikes travel on bike paths?
We don't.
I got to tell you, having walked with the kids on a few of those, especially around Alton Baker, I'm a lot more concerned with some of the bikes that go whizzing by me at speed than I am with some of the electrically assisted devices. And as near as I understand it, aren't any of us getting any younger? And I would think that some of those might be, except Betty, sorry, excuse me, I apologize, you're right. I'd be in favor of expanding that even further with regard to electrically-powered devices that are helpful for the differently-abled that getting around, so.
Councillor Taylor?
Well, I'm opposed to segways and electric-assisted bicycles. I think that the paths should be shared by pedestrians who may be slow or may be just out enjoying the quiet, and bicycles generally are pretty quiet. I think it would be good if we had a speed limit on bicycles, actually, because some, I'm really in favor of bikes, biking, but I think sometimes people who are racing are a threat to pedestrians, people who are walking with small children or with dogs, or people alone who may occasionally move to the other side of the path and not have time to get out of the way. I think an electric-assisted bicycle would be, is no longer human-powered, and that the paths, off-street paths should be for people to go around in a leisurely way. Thank you.
Councillor Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. A procedural question for the city attorney. Shouldn't we table this particular motion, the main motion, until Wednesday when we can, given the number of other pieces that seem to be coming into play here, and reformulate the motion and have you bring back the appropriate language on Wednesday? Would that be, would that be the appropriate thing for us to do now, or, you know, do we pass this sans the amendment to be presented on Wednesday?
So you have a couple choices. One choice is you pass the ordinance as presented, have a work session on, if you're going to have several of these kinds of questions. In terms of councillor Clark's issue, if you decide you want to talk about speed limits at a minimum, if you're going to amend this ordinance, you'll need to have another public hearing because this ordinance has nothing to do with speed limits, and so there would be a lot of people who might want to talk to you about that that didn't come out to testify. Adding segways, that's close enough to what's here that you could do that without having another public hearing. Technically, councillor Zelenka's motion was not in order, which is why I said I was sort of treating it as an intended motion, and if it passed, then I'd ask you to postpone because if a majority of you aren't interested in the intended motion, then you could still pass this ordinance tonight. So if you want to talk about more than just adding the segways and get into things like speed limits and other things that aren't really part of the ordinance, you really should just ask the manager to schedule a work session on those other issues and go ahead and pass this ordinance as it is or with the amendment on segways, which I would bring back to you on Wednesday.
I've got councillor Polling to you and councillor Brown. Before that, I just want to say, I don't know that, you know, I will have a chance to, we'll vote on this, but I do want to say that I, I think the issues people are bringing up are very worth having discussion, but I think bringing something up and making a decision to pass it without having a deliberative discussion about it and really thinking about the pros and cons of it and getting people to tell you so you can weigh everything, I think is dangerous to do. So I would personally advocate that you pass what's here if you're in support of it, and then let's, let's look at all the other issues, because I can see a future here pretty quick with the amount of traffic that's on our bike paths, that we may be looking toward separating the two sides of the bike path and having part of it for pedestrians and part of it for other kinds of transportation. That's what happens in a lot of places, so it's worth having another discussion about where we are and where we're going and what our intention would be, but I really advocate for thoughtfulness about it. Councillor Polling?
Yes, thank you. I was going to make the suggestion that Mr. Klein did, perhaps councillor Zelenka withdraws his motion at this time. We vote on the ordinance as is and then have a work session that includes segways, speed limits, and anything else that might come up.
Other electric vehicles.
Councillor Brown?
Well, I was going to say, I would like to see us add the segways and pass it tonight, and then I think it'd be fine to have a work session later about all the other stuff. Speed limits, that could be real tricky. I mean, I see huge potential problems with enforcement. You know, a lot of the automobile speeders operate with impunity. I don't think we have enough officers to really nail everyone who's speeding, and I just think, but I'm willing to talk about it, I think we ought to talk about it, but I, personally, I don't have a, I'm ready to vote for the main motion and councillor Zelenka's amendment, but I guess that would have to be brought back for Wednesday, and I'm happy to go that way. Thank you.
Councillor Smith?
Yeah, I appreciate councillor Zelenka bringing up the segue idea, and I'd probably be inclined to support it, but I agree with councillor Polling. I feel like it's worth some more discussion and perhaps public comment about that before we actually add that to this motion before us tonight. So if we are going to vote on councillor Zelenka's motion, I'd probably vote against it, but not because I don't think segways should be added. I think they, they could potentially be added, but we should have a fuller, more robust conversation with more information before we go ahead and do that.
Councillor Zelenka?
So, staff, if we add this to the, to the ordinance, can we have that conversation about segways specifically and only on Wednesday for a little while? I don't think it's that long a conversation before we add it in.
I don't know how long a conversation it will be. You know, we do have, scheduled for Wednesday is Mupte, and so we'd like to try to get through some of that, which does have some timing, timeliness issues. The other piece is, is part of what's important on this particular ordinance is the idea of a common boundary, which is, actually makes it much more efficient. And I don't know much about segways myself, but I would also suggest that there are some reasons why we would suggest that they don't be included on the bike path. Doesn't mean that, you may choose something different, but I think we'd like to at least be able to talk about that and explore that some, and so my preference would be is that you have an additional conversation about that. It can be separate from this ordinance, and we can come back and talk about that. We can talk about any other items at the same time and be a little bit more efficient in the use of that particular time, but it would be nice to actually get this one moved forward because there are some things here that we think are important.
Question for the city attorney. So if we, if I withdrew this motion and then brought it up after the break, would that require another set of public hearings and all that other stuff, or we can just, or can we add it as an amendment to this ordinance?
If you withdraw it and act on the ordinance, then it would be just the normal process of work sessions, schedule a public hearing.
So you'd have to go through all of that again?
You would have to have a public hearing, yes, on a new ordinance.
But if we acted on it tonight, it would fit within the context of this ordinance, and we could move it all forward on Wednesday?
Correct.
That would be my preference, but.
Councillor Clark?
Thank you. I agree with councillor Zelenka. That'd be my preference as well, although I don't want to see Wednesday become a discussion on this particular issue. I think that Mupte's going to take us a good chunk of that time, and I certainly don't want to see us taking away time from an appropriate thorough discussion of that so that we can talk about all of the pieces and all of the issues, but I, I would certainly vote in favor of adding segways and coming back after the break to have a fuller discussion on this issue in general.
Councillor Brown?
I appreciate the logic that if we were to try to take care of it tonight, we would prevent having to have another public hearing and so forth, but it sounds like there's still some cooking on this in other areas as well, which is still going to require probably some revisions on a public hearing. So I foresee in the future, whether segways are in it or not, we're going to want to have some more conversation, which is going to require some amendment, which is going to require a public hearing, so it's going to be there either way. So I think segways should be in there, but we might want to have a little conversation about, since we're probably going to have a public hearing anyway, trying to deal with it tonight as a way to prevent a public hearing probably isn't going to work. So I would just suggest that we go ahead, I would recommend to councillor Zelenka that he withdraw, in the expectation that we're going to have maybe more than one amendment and another public hearing, and we'll be going forward anyway because we'll talk about speed limits, we'll probably talk about other kind of vehicles, we may talk about a variety of things, which will most likely require another public hearing anyway.
So.
Well, I can count heads, so I'll withdraw the motion.
You're withdrawing the motion?
Yeah.
But the intention is?
Right. Someday, somehow, we'll bring it back.
Right after break?
Right after break.
And we would be happy to come back. We'll schedule a work session after break to talk about segways and any other items that you might want to talk about on this topic. We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you for that, councillor Zelenka.
The second agrees.
Thank you, the second. Okay, so now we're going to vote on this, on the, so all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, seven. In opposition, one, it passes. Thank you. We're on to item number four, an ordinance concerning the sunset date of the permitted overnight sleeping. City Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. This action item is on a proposed ordinance to extend the sunset date of the permitted overnight sleeping rest stop pilot program, which currently sunsets on October 1st, 2014. The proposed ordinance will extend the rest stop pilot program for one year through October 1st, 2015.
Councillor Brown?
I move to adopt council bill 5126, extending the sunset date of ordinance number 2517 to, 20517, to October 1st, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Polling?
Thank you. At our last session on this, I asked for some information, both from the police department and general information about how the rest stop was working. I appreciate the information that I did get back, and as somebody testified earlier, the stats from the, the work done by the police department shows really no significant changes in calls for service, which I think is, is a good thing for that area. I do have some concerns, though. First of all, I'd like to commend the CSS for the work that they've done with getting people into, we've had, let me see if I can get this right, St. Vincent de Paul Rehab Program, two people have entered that, three people have enrolled in Lane Independent Living Alliance, four have entered drug and rehab, drug and alcohol rehab, and two have enrolled in college. So that is also very significant, and I'm glad, I like that outcome. My concerns are that during this time period, we've, this rest stop has dealt with 55 residents since December 13. The program has had eight residents transition to alternative housing options, which is really good. However, the part that concerns me is that they have dismissed 13 residents for violations of the rules. So they've had to dismiss almost twice as many that have been able to move on. And then the other part that I requested was as information in reference to the average night, people spent, average number of nights people spent there, and also the, how long that they've been, are they truly the Eugene Springfield Lane County homeless, are they from out of the area? And those stats aren't as clear or as available because of the record-keeping that's done, so I am a little concerned about that. And then the one last thing that concerns me is that originally, this rest stop was scheduled to, the pilot program was scheduled to end on March 14th, 2014, but because it got to a late start, we've extended it out until October 1st of 2014. With this motion that we have out now, what we're going to do is extend it out to October of 2015, and if for some reason this fails, the program fails, we're going to have to shut this program down and, at the start of winter time, which I don't think is the right thing to do. So what I am going to propose, I move to amend that we rest up the date, sunset date, we march for, let's do March 1st, 2015, instead of October 1, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. One in favor, two in favor, in opposition? Three, four, five, six, seven, so it goes down. So then we're back to the main motion, and I guess my only comment is that I, I certainly am sorry that so many people haven't been able to stay there, but I think the evidence that shows that they've been able to manage it, that they are enforcing the rules and expectations, and if you can't do it, then you can't be there. And so I appreciate it for that reason. Okay, so we're back on the, did we vote on it?
Not yet, no.
No, okay. So now we're ready to vote on the, on the main motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two, it passes. Thank you. So now we go on to an ordinance concerning climate recovery. City Manager?
As a reminder, the proposed climate recovery ordinance being considered tonight would have the following effects. It would codify the existing organizational and community climate goals, require an assessment of current efforts to gauge our progress toward existing goals, direct staff to develop a science-based community greenhouse gas reduction target, require regular monitoring and reporting on progress toward our climate goals, and create a mechanism for getting back on track if we find, find we are not meeting our targets. During the public hearing held July 21st, 24 people testified in support of the ordinance and three testified in opposition.
Thank you. Council President?
I move to adopt council bill 5124, an ordinance concerning climate recovery.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Zelenka?
Thank you, Mayor. As the author, I was starting to see all the folks that came out and all the people that came out, and all the kids that came out over the past several months to show their support for this important ordinance. It really inspired me as well. I'd like to thank the staff for the good work in helping craft ordinance and the work they do every day to reduce the carbon footprint of the city through our Climate and Energy Action Plan, our internal plan, especially Bevo Sullivan and Matt McCray, good work. And also like to thank our children's trust and Julia Olson for the hard work that they did in all of this, and all the kids that have shown up, shown us what it means to care and then to take action when you really believe in something. So we have an opportunity here to act locally to combat climate change, but if we fail to act, the impacts of climate change will be profound and extreme and expensive. The recent National Climate Assessment and a pile of other scientific studies tell us that the impacts of climate change are real, are happening now, and are happening faster than we originally predicted. Carbon pollution not only threatens public health but exacerbates climate change. It contributes to more frequent and more violent extreme weather that will cost our communities, our federal government, and our local economy billions of dollars every year. Dealing with climate change is one of our most important defining issues of our time. And fortunately, Eugenians get it. In a recent survey, 75% agreed that climate change requires much stronger regulation of greenhouse gas emissions, and 77% believe that it's occurring because of human causes like burning fossil fuels. So we heard what the community's been saying, and in response, we put forth the climate recovery ordinance. Eugene's climate recovery ordinance put into law, would put into law the unanimous adopted city goals to make the city-owned facilities and operations carbon-neutral by 2020 and reduce community-wide fossil fuel consumption 50% by 2030. It also requires the city to assess whether we are on track to meet our goals, and if not, develop an implementation plan to reach the goals. The ordinance also starts the process for developing a science-based, numerical- numerical community-wide goal or carbon budget, consistent with achieving 350 parts per million of CO2 in the atmosphere by 2100. And finally, it calls for reports every two years, a comprehensive report every five years. So it's clearly cheaper to prevent climate change than it is to mitigate for its adverse impacts. So I believe we have an obligation to ourselves and our children to act and not to burden our children with the immense cost of climate change. So while Congress did this, we have the chance to do something here locally, and we have an opportunity to show leadership and put our goals into law. And finally, we can show that our children, that they matter and that their voice matters. The plan to get us back on track through our energy would be cost-effective real actions that will combat climate change, and we will save money through energy efficiency, doing things smarter, and in the end, we'll be better off than if we were ignoring climate change. So I urge my fellow councilors to support this ordinance as proposed.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the things we do when we have these kind of discussions, we call them discussions at council, but we don't actually debate things back and forth with one another. We don't ask each other questions and have debates. So some of these kinds of conversations are difficult. There are many questions I would like to ask, but I'll stick with this one. I don't disagree with Counselor Zelenka that there are oftentimes important reasons why we need to act locally on larger scale issues. I would wonder, however, if he would agree that there's often the need to balance that with the cost to us to do so locally, and I'm just going to speak hypothetically now. Let's say hypothetically that, well, let's set some information first. When Hynek's was a taxpayer and operating in West Eugene, my recollection is of them paying several million dollars a year in property taxes. City manager, do you happen to remember something near the average of what they paid a year?
I don't. What I do know is when they
Nine billion a year.
I don't know. I know we lost several million when they closed.
Right.
As part of our budget process.
I just heard one of my colleagues say they thought it was closer to 15. It was many, it was several, several million a year that that one company paid in property taxes that helped pay for the library and pay for the parks that we can't afford to maintain these days, all of those other things. So here's my question. While I understand the passion and the belief system that drives this action, I wonder at what cost we will do things like this if we know, for example, with like Hynek's, if somebody was going to lease that facility or buy that facility and begin to act, but this particular council action kept them from doing so, and in that end, the city lost many millions of dollars in property taxes in the process. I wonder if that makes it too expensive, or I wonder to myself if my colleagues would still think it was a good idea to act in those circumstances. I probably won't support this because of some other costs that I have information it will cost us, but I understand the reason that drives Counselor Zelenka to this motion.
I guess I would simply add that the thing you left out is science drives this discussion. And also, as we look at this and many other things, we look at real costs. What's the cost of not doing something as opposed to the cost of doing it? So we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two. It passes. All right. Okay, action item number six, an ordinance concerning single-family code amendments. City manager?
Thanks, Mayor. Tonight, the council will take action on land use code amendments related to single-family housing in the R1 low-density residential zone. The proposed amendments would revise development standards for secondary dwellings, dwellings on existing alley access lots, and accessory buildings citywide except within Amazon, Fairmount, and South University neighborhoods.
Okay, counsel president?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5115 concerning single-family code amendments for accessory buildings, alley access lots, and secondary dwellings.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Counsel Pryor.
This was a question related to the flag lot revisions that were made. I just wanted to clarify that we still, that this version that we're voting on tonight still does not deal with the 150 flag lots that would potentially be left out of this. Those are still kind of left out in limbo?
They would not be allowed to be, to develop with a secondary dwelling. They'd still be allowed to have a primary dwelling, but with the standards that are in this particular ordinance before you, there are some larger flag lots that would no longer be eligible for a secondary dwelling.
Have we heard anything back from any of these people with regard to what's currently being passed, or are they even aware of it?
I don't know if they're aware of it, to be honest.
Okay, so at this point, there's still not, there's still not a resolution to that?
Correct, for those 150 or so lots.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to staff for coming around to being very supportive of making sure that we heard all of the folks' testimony that felt strongly about this and that we made the appropriate adjustments. And I also want to say thank you to the neighborhood leaders who've worked very long and hard to be heard on this and to craft something that works for people. So, thank you.
Counsel Polling?
So just so everybody's perfectly clear, what this motion is doing is approving what used to be called the alternative proposal. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then there are still some of the flag lots that we have not heard from or contacted the property owners?
So the original alternative proposal, this is going to be complicated, we sent out notice to approximately 300 owners of large flag lots, and under that alternative proposal, they would not be allowed for a secondary dwelling. As you heard at your public hearing, there was, you definitely received some written testimony as well as some oral testimony about that. The record was left open, and a set of conceptual standards was submitted that would only, you know, would allow, you know, at least half of those or so to have a secondary dwelling. So it is true that, you know, roughly 150 would still not be able to have a secondary dwelling under these standards. We have not recontacted them. They did receive an original notice that said you were proposing, you were looking at changes that would make it so they couldn't have a secondary dwelling.
And then in addition to the flag lots that we were discussing, and I can't find it on the matrix, there was a number of additional properties that were being, that would have been eliminated. For some reason, I can't find it.
No, it's the very, because it's very front, and you're probably digging through it. It's, it's the very first row, the farthest square on your right under secondary dwellings under implications of alternative proposal. So there are, by increasing the minimum lot size to allow for a secondary dwelling, which is one of the amendments in this ordinance, about somewhere between 4,500 and 4,700 lots will no longer be eligible for a secondary dwelling.
And we have not had any contact with those?
Those, those property owners also received the same notice prior to the public hearing to let them know that that was a possibility, that they were losing that allowance. And you did receive testimony both at the public hearing and in writing from some of those property owners.
You know, I'm kind of torn on this one. The city staff put a lot of time and effort into their work on this. They went to the planning commission, who also spent an awful lot of time. They went through a technical review by some volunteers in our community, including Mia Nelson from Thousand Friends and Ed McMahon from the Home Builders. And the planning commission, the technical group, and staff all agreed on a specific outcome. And then after that was presented, then some of the neighborhood association folks got involved in this, and now we're hearing, I'm wrong, I'm, anyway, we've got this alternative proposal. So, which is going to potentially eliminate a lot of, a lot of properties that would have, in the, in the past, had an opportunity to build a secondary dwelling. Is that correct?
It's lots between 4,500 square feet and 6,100 square feet would, they would no longer be eligible for a secondary dwelling, and then about 150 of the larger flag lots.
So if one were to make a motion to go back with the original proposal, would that be following the city manager's recommendation as it's outlined in the AIS? Or is, is the city manager now recommending the alternative proposal?
What are we recommending?
The agenda item summary recommends the alternative proposal.
Yes. I'm sorry, say that again?
The, in the, your, tonight's packet, it recommends the alternative proposal. It recommends whatever ordinance is attached here.
Okay, so in, all right.
I think from our perspective, we just need to land this conversation and move on. And so partly what we wanted to do is we're recommending what you see before you. If at some point we need to come back and revisit the conversation, then we can sure do that. But my concern is we'll, we'll be here for another several months on the same topic, and at the end of the day, it does impact individual property owners. So they will have an impact. But we also need to land this in order for us to move forward and landing Envision Eugene in the bigger sense of things. So that's, that is important to us to be able to keep moving forward.
Yeah, I think that the counsel polling is correct about the chronology. I think what we've come to is a compromise at this point that I think most folks can live with. If we need to go back and fix it, we can do it later. But for the purposes of moving Eugene, envision Eugene forward, respecting the work of the planning commission, the TRG, and the staff, I think we need to vote on this, move this forward, and get this done. And then we can look at if there are issues about those other flag lots, which were not brought up in testimony tonight. In fact, the only person who testified tonight about that was?
Mr. Hale.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, Mr. Hale. And he seemed to be comfortable with it. So I think that if other people are, you know, have issues with this, I think they'll bring it up later. And right now, I think it's time for us to move on and get this thing done.
Counsel Clark.
Yeah, I think Counselor Evans hit most of the high points of what I was going to say. I think the chronology of how did we get to where we are with this is certainly up to multiple perspectives, I would say. There are many different ways to look at how did we get here that I think are germane. But I think the most important point is that, as Counselor Evans has mentioned, we're in a decent place where most people would think this is a good place for us to be, and it's time for us to move on to the next part. Thank you.
Pryor.
Like, and I'm not telling what counsel polling would have voted, but sentiment that counsel polling expressed was similar to the sentiment I was having or the thinking I was having. And I was inclined to vote no because I was concerned about all the lots that were being left out, and the fact that we might still want to cook this a little bit more. I was concerned with the fact that we were going down one road, and then suddenly it shifted without a lot of conversation. It was just, I moved the change, boom, it passed, and suddenly we're on a whole different track without a lot of conversation about the individual elements. But when you say you need to land this thing and keep moving forward with Envision Eugene, that's also very persuasive to me because I do know we need to keep moving forward with Envision Eugene. There's, there's a lot of things that are just kind of hanging until we get this taken care of. So reluctantly, I think I will vote in favor of this, even though I recognize it's leaving a lot of properties out. There's a lot of things that still should be tweaked, things that still need to be done. But yeah, I'm hearing what you're saying about we can't work on this for another 30 days, 60 days, even though it probably really deserves that and may hopefully get some of that later on. But I'll, I'll vote in favor of it, even though it's a little bit, I'm holding my nose to do it.
I'm glad you're going to hold your nose, so I don't have to hold my nose.
One last question, and I kind of maybe have the answer already. But in the event that somebody has been overlooked or got something in the mail, sent out something from the city and threw it in the trash, or whatever their reason, somebody that has a piece of property that could have, could fit a secondary dwelling, but now because of what we're going to pass, they are not, is there some way that they can come back and say, hey, for whatever reason, and it's got to be fairly legitimate, I either did not receive the information or was not aware of what was going on? Is there some way that we can allow some sort of an appeal on this of some kind?
I suspect they would have to change the ordinance, but I'll let our city attorney talk about that.
Correct. There isn't something they can say, hey, I didn't see it, I didn't notice it, I didn't pay attention to it, I didn't even get it. What the law requires is that the city mail out that notice. And as Alyssa said, you know, roughly 5,000 notices went out. If somebody comes to you and says, hey, I didn't realize this, this affected me in this way, seems bad policy, the council can always say, city manager, we're initiating another amendment that will accomplish A, B, and C. And then planning staff can work with the planning commission to develop an ordinance, public hearing there, come back to you, and deal with it that way. But there's no way to short circuit that process.
So basically, if somebody did slip through the cracks for whatever reason, it'd be on a case-by-case review, basically?
Or somebody comes to you and asks you to change the ordinance, and we'd go through, hopefully, a shorter time this time, but basically the same process.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All ready then, going to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In opposition, one. It passes. So before we close up tonight, I just want to say that I appreciate everyone, things that pass that you agree with or don't agree with. I appreciate, we've worked on these for a long time. These are very important things. Everybody has some things that they like and don't like, but I just wanted to express my appreciation. Several of these issues are of local and national importance, and your work has been really wonderful about this. Thank you all.